Are we gonna get this thing on the road, get it over with?
San Dimas City Council meeting to order, ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda this evening is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any matter within our jurisdiction. In order to participate, we ask that you come to the microphone and we request that you give us your name and address. You are not required to provide either of those when participating in oral communications. So, we're ready to start. We have a three-minute time limit. The light on the boat, the rostrum there will be green for the first two minutes, then it'll be yellow, then it will turn red, and you're supposed to be finished when it turns red. So, anyone like to address the city council? Come forward and take your shot.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Bobby Mathis. I've been living in the city for quite some time now, and I would like to address the ADU and the covenant that now, basically, the state has made illegal to enforce, and I would just like to encourage the city council to, basically, if in the event that you are able to activate that, within five years, the city council maybe overrule that, only because the whole covenant idea is, basically, I truly believe that it's a very socialism-type of theology mindset. And, you know, we know that we're, basically, losing, like, Prop 13 for our businesses, and I think there's gonna be another wave of homelessness for people that have owned properties, and Prop 13 comes into effect on your properties as well. And so, you know, and by the way, it's no cigarette, I'm running for mayor, and I've been criticized a whole lot on running for mayor, and rightly so, because, you know, I do believe our intentions in the city of San Dimas is ma- basically, we wanna help people. People really don't know me, I know Emmett is an amazing guy, and I think that I would be the first one to call Emmett if he actually prevails and becomes the mayor. But I do believe that, you know, just knowing the city, we like to go by the rules and the laws and stuff, and I just think that, as mayor, we need to, I don't know, I would, I'd like to see a little bit of, not religion, 'cause I can't stand religion, but just more of a personal relationship with God and with people. And I think, as mayor, I would love to have more of a one-on-one relationship with people, and props to Kirk Morris, and we've had her bump in the road, I mean, my statement of closure, and I've really given it to God, but I'm gonna read quick. It says here, "The proverb's son of, um, the Proverbs, the Solomon, son of David, king of Israel, to know wisdom and instruction, to perceive the words of the understanding, to receive insight and wisdom, justice, judgment, and quality; to give prudence to the simple, to the young man knowledge and discretion. A wise man will hear an increase in learning, and a man of understanding will attain wise counsel, to understand a proverb and the enigma, the words of the wise and the riddles. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge, but fools despise wisdom and instruction." We know that King Solomon wrote the Proverbs, and he's the wisest guy in the world, smartest dude in the world, and I just think it's really neat to incorporate just a personal relationship with people, with God, and no religious kinda stuff, just more of a personal relationship. And, so, I just want you to know that, you know, I've been up here, I've been kind of screaming line sometimes about integrity, this, that, and the other. Hey, you know what? I have to say to God every day, "I am sorry," and help me to, you know, to be able to relate to people and just be a people person. And, you know, so that being said, I'm gonna leave before my time is up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council?
Mayor Morris, city council staff, Bob Olander, with my wife Jean, we just wanted to come tonight and thank you for your forty years of caring, loving service to this city. You're a man of integrity, and you're a civil individual, and my wife always tells me how she appreciates your clarity. So, whatever your future endeavors are for you and your wife, we wish you happiness, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Levy-Busch, the Chief Communications Officer for the Foothill Gold Line Construction Authority. It's good to see everybody. As you are all well aware, the Construction Authority has awarded the contract for the next at least nine miles of the project, which includes the San Dimas portion of the project. We will be under major construction starting in August, and ahead of that, we are hosting a series of community meetings that are gonna be happening in the next couple weeks, so I wanted to make sure that you're aware of it, invite everybody from the city of San Dimas to attend one of the four meetings. The meeting in San Dimas is happening right here at the Community Center on Thursday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30. At that meeting, the artist for San Dimas will be present, the artist team from San Dimas will be present. If that date does not work for anybody, and you would still be interested in learning the latest about the project, meeting the team that's gonna be building it, as well at, excuse me, as well as understanding what the construction schedule is, you can attend any of the other three meetings that are happening. The same information will be presented at all four meetings, except for the artist that will be present. So, the other meetings are happening on Thursday, March 5th, that's the first meeting in the city of Glendora. The second one is on Tuesday, March 10th, in Laverne, on Wednesday, March 11th, in Pomona, and then, of course, Thursday, March 12th, here in San Dimas. We have information on our website, foothillgoldline.org. The city has information on your website, and we have information in City Hall as well about the open houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just ask real quick, when you say "the artist," are you talking about the group of folks from San Dimas that were helping or talking about the art projects that were there, or are you talking about an individual that has been commissioned by somebody?
There is an art team, an artist team, that was selected by the city quite a few years ago, that will actually be designing and completing the artwork for the station. They were selected by a committee that the city council appointed back, I think, in about 2007, 2008. So, their names are Eugene and Ann Dobbs, and they will be present to just talk about their art and what their plans are for the art at the future station.
Super. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All the items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion, unless there's a request to remove any item for separate discussion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, and second to approve, any further discussion? Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, that carries by a five-zero unanimous vote. That brings us to the end of the consent calendar, and brings us to a public hearing. This is a public hearing related to Municipal Code Text Amendment 20-0002. Ken?
It's my pleasure to introduce Lauren Marshall, who is an analyst in our Public Works Department, who is recently promoted from within our organization, and I'd like to call on her to give our staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. The item for your review and recommendation tonight may look familiar as it relates to the directional sign policy the council approved back in December 2019. This, tonight, is a municipal code text amendment under Chapter 18.152 signs, specifically for signs in the public right-of-way. So, just to give you a little bit of background, recently, there has been increased interest by various private entities to install directional or wayfinding signs in the public right-of-way throughout the city, in order to aid the public in finding their various facilities. Due to the increase of requests for such signage, staff conducted research, prepared a draft policy for the city council's review and feedback, and identified necessary municipal code text amendments that would be required to enact the said policy. Drafts of the policy were reviewed and commented on by the city council at both the October 14th, 2019, and December 10th, 2019, city council study sessions. And it was on that December 10th, 2019, study session, the city council formally adopted a policy for the signage, which lays out criteria and procedures, and directed staff to conduct necessary municipal code text amendments to enact this policy. The city council determined that the adopted policy would go into effect concurrent with the effective date of the necessary code amendments. Staff then prepared draft code text for the public's input and the planning commission's review. And above is a summary of the code amendment text. Basically, this was what was presented to the planning commission on February 6th, and, basically, it updates the directional and monument sign definitions so that they can be consistent with the policy that has been adopted. Section 170 now includes language that addresses the installation of private and directional, or private directional and monument signs outside of the downtown area. And then, Section 180 now includes text exempting off-site directional and monument signs in the public right-of-way from a lease requirement, given that the policy will actually require a, an agreement between the city and the entity whose signage would be installed in the public right-of-way. And then, finally, Section 200F has been amended to clarify it relates to directional signs on private property, which shows a clear delineation between Section 170 and 200F that hadn't previously been there. So, as I said, on February 6th, 2020, the planning commission heard this item, and they adopted Resolution PC-1629, and recommended approval of the Municipal Code Text Amendment 20-0002 to the city council by a four-zero vote, with one commissioner absent, and there was no public comment for this item that night. And so, finally, staff and the planning commission recommend reading by title and introducing Ordinance 1278, approving Municipal Code Text Amendment 20-0002, which is Chapter 18, for Chapter 18.152 signs of the San Dimas Municipal Code. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any members of the council have questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to speak either in favor of, against, or to ask any questions you might like to ask. Unlike the oral communications portion, in order to participate in a public hearing, you are required to give us your name and where you live. Anybody like to participate? Public hearing is now open. Anyone? Go in once, twice. Public hearing is closed, bring the matter back to the city council for a decision. The appropriate motion would be a motion to to read by title the ordinance number 1278, and introduce it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we will have way further reading after you read it by title, please. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 1278, and ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas, California, adopting Municipal Code Text Amendment 20-0002 to amend Chapter 18.152, signs of the San Dimas Municipal Code.
I moved away further reading and adopt the ordinance.
Introduce.
Introduce.
Okay. We have a motion and second to way further reading and adopt, oh, pardon me, introduce.
I just, I have a question.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, the reason we brought this back, or we brought it forward, wasn't it because the golf course wanted a monument-type sign? And in layman terms, does this mean that they can get the monument sign in the center divider like they had it before?
Yes, it means that they can submit an application for that, and there's, this provides a legal framework for approval of that sign. It has, I mean, it has to go through an approval process.
Right, I understand that.
But yes.
Okay, so, there's no, there's no agenda that says that we're, we're gonna look at it very openly, to what they wanted before, or what they had before, and that we decided to move it? There's a process now for them to have it.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Is anybody opposed to the motion? Hearing no opposition, a motion carries by a five-zero unanimous vote, and the Municipal Code Text Amendment is introduced. And that brings us to the end of the public hearings, and we'll be back to oral communications. If anybody would like to address the city council, this is another opportunity. The only difference in the rules is the time limit is five minutes instead of three. Anyone want to address the city council? Seeing no one come?
Too quick, mayor. I don't blame you. Peter Sluice, San Dimas. I was gonna give you, I thought this might be your last meeting, and I echo Bob's comments. I think, you know, we are very, very lucky to have you as mayor. It's been an honor to speak in front of you. You've always been a very good resource. You've always been frank. You, I appreciate what you say and how you say it, and I'm, I feel bad that you're retiring, but I'm happy for you. San Bernardino line, I thought I'd give you some background on noise testing, 'cause I thought, they've talked about doing some more testing, and I just wanna make sure people are understanding. I know that they know the barrier part of it, I've made a lot of comments about safety and whatnots, but the San Bernardino line, just for everybody that's not aware, the trains are always headed on the westbound end by a cab car. As cabs, as the train goes to Union Station, it goes past our houses, the leading train is always a cab car. It is not a locomotive. So, when the locomotives are being replaced now, they are a little quieter, so on a 24-hour average, it will produce a quieter average on 24 hours. But as far as residents that are impacted by trains blowing a whistle before they come into an intersection, like my place, which is a direct line of sight from the cab car into my window, blowing a 96 to 110 decibel horn, creates a situation where you have to scrape yourself off the ceiling. That is not a situation that is acceptable, they could do 24-hour averages, they could even have a new locomotive that's quieter, but it's still not acceptable. Ten of the first 12 trains in the morning are eastbound trains. I don't know if you realize that, 'cause everybody's going, it's basically a commuter line, and people are going to Los Angeles. And they blow the horns in areas leading into the intersection, which, of the five or six intersections, that's where, that's where my place is. In 2011 is when they approved the Tier Four locomotives. In 2012 is when they actually ordered them. In 2016 is when they actually started receiving them. In 2020, they're hoping to have them all in service. It's almost a 10-year cycle. They've had all kinds of problems, they continue to have problems, but they're, they're admitting that they're gonna have them in by summertime. They have a 52 locomotive inventory, 40 of them should be these new locomotives. As I watch them go by my place, I don't see very many of the new ones. I'm not sure where, how they're gonna ramp up, but they appear very confident, so hopefully they do. I also wanna just quickly mention, too, that while I say it's unacceptable, the last three areas that MetroLink has done new additional service, Paris, Redlands, and, not MetroLink, but the light rail, they've all taken steps with sound walls. Paris was sued by a citizens group, and MetroLink settled with them, they put in additional mitigations. I think they could've gotten a lot more, the citizens group, but they didn't. They were trying to be nice. Redlands, they're, from my understanding, looking at the IIRs, it looks like, and I haven't been there physically myself, but it looks like they're putting in extensive sound walls. And the light rail obviously puts in lots of sound walls, and it's a very low-impact system, and, you know, there's nothing compares MetroLink to a light rail, it's their day and night difference. So, when light rail thinks they need to make mitigations, heavy rail definitely should. So, I thought I'd just bring all that up, and I appreciate your, again, your service, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, we're gonna move on now to the city manager.
Just a couple of quick items. First of all, there will be an Ask the Mayor program this coming Thursday, February 27th, starting at 7 o'clock, and so, if you're interested in tuning in to K West, Channel 3, and watch that show, or we would strongly encourage you to call in with questions, so that we can answer those questions on your behalf. Secondly, I would like to, again, congratulate Lauren on her first city council presentation. I know it's probably nerve-wracking, but I think you did a very admirable, professional job, and thank you for your professional report. And then, a couple of election issues. Just to remind the community that the, you know, county new voting system is vote centers, and the San Dimas Community Center is a vote center, and it is open seven days a week from now until the election next Tuesday. So, take a look at your voter guide and information, and understand a little bit more about the voting process. The convenience of having the vote centers open for a number of days before the election is to minimize the impact on the day of the election, so we would encourage people to take advantage of that opportunity if you're so inclined to. In addition, the night of the election, which is next Tuesday, the city hall will be open, and we will be posting election results here at our city hall, as well as on our website and on our cable television channel. So, if you want more information about how that process will work, please go to our website, and you can get more information regarding that. Lastly, that the city council did have a study session at 5 o'clock this evening, prior to the regular city council meeting. It was an open, public meeting, and the hope, the purpose was that the city is starting the beginning of their budget process, so it was an opportunity for the city staff and the council to have some interaction regarding budget priorities for the upcoming year. So, if you're interested in knowing more about that process, you can go to the city's website, we'll have our budget schedule on the website, and you can contact me or members of our staff and get more information about the city's budget process. But that process really begins now through the end of June, which, and July 1st is the beginning of our budget cycle. So, if you want more information regarding our budget, please contact the city staff. So, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I have no ideas, mayor.
Okay, the next item, under the items for the city council, is the appointment of a youth commissioner to the Parks and Recreation Commission. At our last meeting, the person to be appointed was here and was introduced, but we had, did not have his appointment on the agenda. So, we have, the recommendation is to appoint Ivan Magania to the youth commission. He has been interviewed by Hector, the department head, and highly recommends him, he's very, Ivan is very interested in this position. We have had many years of very good and interested students participating in that commission. I think it's been good for the students, and it's been good for, for all of the, of the members of the commission to gear the, the point, Parks and Recreation from the point of view of the people who might actually be using it. So, the recommendation is that, and I'll make the motion, that we appoint Ivan Magania as the youth representative on the pub- Thank you, for a second. Anybody else wanna make any comments or questions? Okay, is anybody opposed to the motion? If without opposition, that carries by a five-zero unanimous vote, and Ivan Magania is appointed. Do you wanna just stand up? I mean, you're here, you might as well let people know who you are.
Hello, my name is Ivan Magania, as you heard, and I am very glad to be working for the city, the San Dimas, as I've lived here my whole life, and I really do wanna have a part in making it a better place, and working through the Parks and Recreation, I feel, could really help that. So, thank you for having me.
Well, thank you for being willing. Well, thank you for being willing. And the next item is the mandatory report if any council members have attended a meeting at the expense of the city since we last reported. Seeing nobody jumping up to make a report, we'll now move on to individual members' comments and updates, and start with Ryan.
Oh, does the luncheon for the school district, does that count as a reportable?
Probably should be recognized, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to report it, but it should be.
Oh, okay, all right.
Acknowledge it, yeah.
So I attended the luncheon for the school district today, at the expense of the city, just to be clear. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, what? Oh, never mind. So anyways, a couple things. Number one is I wanted to commend staff on their community meeting the other Wednesday regarding S P twenty-three. I think a lot of members of the community turned out for that. I think staff did a good job in fielding the questions, educating the community. I think it's a complex issue all around, not just those three properties, but the housing issues that the city must face. So I encourage, again, I know the city has put up a lot of educational information relating to the housing laws and how they've changed. I would encourage members of the community to look at that and understand that it's, the city must confront that all around. It's not just S P twenty-three. It is literally the city of San Dimas as a whole must look at how to be able to address housing in the future. That includes regular inventory as well as affordable inventory. So I encourage people to go to those websites and look at those things. Secondly, as mentioned earlier, I attended the Manita Unified School District State of the District earlier today with Councilman Bedar. That was a really great presentation. Everyone should be excited to know the school is now in one of the top ten percent of the districts in terms of its rating, competing with schools like Palos Verdes, school districts, and others. They're doing outstanding work. It was interesting, one fact to take away from that that makes our school district unique, is that they're accelerated, they're accelerating, doing an outstanding job, but forty percent of the student body is at the poverty rate. And that was an interesting statistic that kind of came from this presentation today. So I think it's, it's a testament to the teachers and the educators and the coaches, as well as everyone that's got a hand in it, the educational foundation that are doing outstanding work and helping those students. So I applaud them. Assembly Bill Five, I heard from a number of small businesses in the community, business owners, who were, who fear they'd be adversely impacted by A B five and its effects. I directed a number of them to the state senator's office, as well as our assemblyman's office. I'm happy to report that Senator Portantino is working to be able to work through some of those impacts of A B five, and that's, for those that don't know, it impacts a employer's ability to hire independent contractors. An interesting odd one that came from a business owner here in San Dimas is there's a, as some of you know, I scuba dive. So we have a scuba diving shop here in town, and all of his scuba diving instructors are independent employees, or independent contractors, excuse me. And so this law that's soon to go into effect would almost kill the scuba industry, not just his shop, but many of them. So I'm happy to say he was put in touch with Marco Ludgren and Matt Lyon. I spoke with Matt Lyon today. The assemblyman's going to host some meetings in the near future in Laverne. So if you're a business owner and interested in that, and were negatively affected by A B five, you should reach out to their office. Two last things, get out and vote. It is election time, as you heard, so we're in those last few days of the election, so please do get out and vote. And lastly, I am festively dressed for Mardi Gras. Happy Mardi Gras. For those that don't know, I have family in Thibodeau, Louisiana, and Metairie in New Orleans, so they're all out having a great time last few days, and it's Fat Tuesday. So I wish everyone a great day and a great night, and it's Ash Wednesday tomorrow. So have a good night.
Thank you. John?
The only thing I wanted to mention was it is election season. The election is, or ends on March third. You can vote early if you want to. Deborah, correct me if I'm wrong, a person who's not registered to vote in San Dimas can register at the voting center when they go to vote, correct?
Yeah.
So if they're registered in.
Registration to vote for the election.
Oh, it's not for this election? Okay.
Registration period.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say, except go out and vote.
Emmett?
As has been said a couple of times from Ryan, I did attend a, the Manita School District State of the District luncheon earlier today, presented by the superintendent of schools, Carl Coles. I can tell you, we as a community are very, very fortunate that we have a district like Anita. When you hear the things that they're doing for, for our kids, the kids that live in this community that eventually move on to colleges, and hopefully some will come back, and we have several, several students who have gone away, come back, and are actually teaching in our schools, it's, it's really a truly amazing thing. And so I was very proud to hear about all the things that are happening. We're, we're such a, a district that's in such demand, and with the new laws, we have twenty percent of our district, kids going to our schools that don't live in San Dimas or Laverne. Their parents work here and things like that, so they're able to come here. So they're actually bringing their kids here and to, to get a, an education, and like Ryan said earlier, we're in the top ten percent of the school districts, and that, that's pretty amazing. I just want to commend the, the district. I'm sure that at some point, Ken is going to tell people about the reception from, on March the seventh for Kurt. So I'm sure that he's, he's going to do that, so I'm going to stay away from that. So, but other than that, happy Mardi Gras, I guess. I couldn't figure out why he was wearing the bow tie.
You know, the construction authority for the goal line is, as was said before, has a meeting here in San Dimas on Thursday, March twelfth. But this construction authority only has the power to build the goal line to Montclair, to the county border. Our assemblyman, Assemblyman Holden, has introduced legislation to form another construction authority to build the goal line from Montclair to the airport, which makes a lot of sense. If you're going to go to Montclair, you must go all the way to the airport. That hasn't passed yet, it's just been introduced. And as was said previously, you can vote early. Come to San Dimas and vote. You don't have to vote until, wait until Tuesday. You can vote tomorrow, Saturday, Sunday, any day you want. So come and vote early.
Thank you. Lauren, you did a great job for your first presentation. Welcome to the, to the job, and we hope we'll, not, if I see you, it'll be on TV, but, but I hope you have a, a great career here at San Dimas. Thank you. I have nothing else to add, because I'm trying to set a record on the shortest meeting ever, and we're maybe reasonably close. So with that, we're.
Kurt, I'm sorry, I do want to interrupt. I'm so sorry. Deborah, I'm reading here on the L.A. County Registrar's website that the C V R conditional voter registration, the ballot is counted if their registration is verified. So in other words, they don't put it in the machine like everybody else does. They hand it in so that it's separate, and the registration is then counted, ballot is counted if the registration is valid.
Is that speaking to the registration that day?
Yes.
If they just not found in the system, if they're not in it, because there's a lag, if they register, it might work. We can't hear you, sorry.
I'm not used to talking.
I'm sorry, Deborah.
That, that may need to be clarified, because it, that could mean that when they go in to vote and they're not found in the system, they will allow them to vote, turn their ballot in, and then they will verify if they've registered, because if they registered the week before, they may not be in the system, and that's why they're being allowed to vote. That's my understanding of that process.
So, yeah, and I'd like to get, make sure we have that on our website. I'll put it on my Facebook page, but it starts out by saying eligible Los Angeles County residents who miss an election's registration deadline can still vote at any vote center, and then it goes on to talk about the condition, where they register there, they take the ballot and mark it, but instead putting it into the machine, they hand it in so that it's separate, you know, not counted at that point. But then like all these things that are kind of the late things that we're going to be waiting for, for days or weeks, it would be verified and then counted if, and it says it would be counted if it would, you know, the registration is valid.
If it's verified.
So I just wanted, I, because I, I thought that was the case. I know some, some people personally who are registered in Laverne, I'm saying, well, but I don't know if they re-registered in time, and I said, you know, go to the voting center. But, but anyway, I think, I think that's the case. If I'm wrong, I apologize.
Did you hear?
Okay, sorry, Kurt, for the interruption. But we'll, we'll clarify that, and if there, if there is a provisional opportunity, then we'll make sure that we get that information on our website. Okay, thank you so much. And then since Emmett called me out on this, I'll comment that we are having a, the city is hosting a reception for retiring Mayor Morris on Saturday, March seventh. It'll be in the community building from four thirty to six thirty. We do ask that you are S V P, because just so we know that there's no fee attached to it, but just so that we have kind of a head count. And I know that I'm being timed right now, because. I'm trying to see how much time we still got. Get the mayor there. Anyway, so if you're, if you're interested in that, there's information on the city's website regarding that.
It's actually four to six.
Oh, I'm sorry, four to six, I'm sorry. Okay.
With all of that, we are adjourned to our meeting at seven P M. on March tenth. And.
Did we make it?
Ken and I will be waiting for your telephone calls on Thursday night. Thank you.[1728.83]